jointly on the Coliseum Authority Board, where I helped open the nation's first FEMA-backed mass vaccination site, where we provided free COVID vaccines to hundreds of thousands of people in a very efficient and effective way. In the city of Oakland, I have launched the Macro Civilian Crisis Responder Program to provide a more effective response to those having mental health struggles. And I have worked to provide funding for small businesses impacted by COVID and to reduce the charges for permits and inspections. I would be honored to work together with you. And I recognize that we need a well-trained workforce, that we need strong public hospitals and public health, that we need to house the homeless and make life easier to do business. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lena Tam, welcome.
Thank you to both chambers for inviting us to this forum. I am Lena Tam. I had served on the Alameda City Council as the first Asian woman vice mayor. And following the tragic passing of Supervisor Wilma Chan, I'm running for the Board of Supervisors with a great sense of responsibility and determination to expand her legacy in improving county services for all and also help serve as a voice for our large and growing Asian-American community that make up about a third of the county's population. I plan to prioritize the issues of housing, community safety, and healthcare, especially mental healthcare access, and bring my lived experience as the daughter of immigrant parents who relied on county bilingual services as your next supervisor. I live and I grew up in Alameda, going through the public school system here. Graduated from UC Berkeley in environmental engineering. I work in Oakland Chinatown for the last 30 years at the East Bay Mud Building. And I've served on the Board of Directors of the Oakland Chinatown Chamber of Commerce. I'm running on a proven track record of collaboration in getting things done. As the Vice Mayor of Alameda, I work to get affordable housing built for our low-income seniors, our disabled community, our veterans, and secure housing for our new boys and girls club. As President of the Alameda Healthcare District Governing Alameda Hospital, I work with private funders to establish an infusion center to help cancer patients receive treatment close to home and kept our hospital open with emergency room services. When I chaired the Alameda County Planning Commission, we entitled 2,400 new homes near transit to preserve open space and reduce traffic gridlock. As the Water Resources Manager at East Bay Mud, I developed plans to address climate change, sea level rise, and protecting our bay. I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. Everyone did really well on the time. I appreciate that. And we should say sorry for the interruption, Councilmember Kaplan. We did, we are recording this so people can watch it who might miss it. We're gonna go ahead and get started with our first question. So yesterday's horrific massacre at a Texas school is top of mind for everyone right now. So we thought that we would start there. And you know, I can remember when I was in high school in the late 80s and my dad held the seat on the Board of Supervisors and worked so hard on gun control back then. And here we are 35 years later. And we're still having this conversation. So the question is, as a supervisor, what can you do at the county level on gun control and prosecution? And we're going to start with David Kakashiiba.
The but the Sarah's Department can play a major role in assisting and working with local police departments around the investigation and working with the FBI and the Alcohol Tobacco and Firearms Bureau in terms of tracing illegal gun sales, issues around ghost guns, and the and the use of multiple weapons that are in gun shootings and in homicides. The Sarah's Department can play a particular attention to that, both in, not only in the unincorporated areas, but in terms of the investigation support that local jurisdictions certainly need and certainly Oakland Police Department could use that. Gun control, you know, I actually walked with your father. He was passing out, going door to door and getting gun locks to residents as a way to prevent both accidental and some deliberate efforts of using firearms. It's a very grassroots approach. The scope and scale is another issue. But the point being is that that effort, I think, was a real leadership effort to educate rank-and-file residents in the district about the, you know, the terrible situation with gun violence. And being responsible gun owners and gun possessors means that we have to protect our own safety and the safety of everybody in the household.
Thank you. Rebecca Kaplan, same question.
Well, thank you very much for the question and for the opportunity to say that while it's never wrong to have hope and to have prayers, it is wrong if that is all we do. And that is not an acceptable response to gun violence. I do not believe that Americans are more inherently evil than almost everyone else on earth. I don't believe they are. But Americans shoot people and kill them with guns more often than virtually anywhere else on earth. And that is largely because of the widespread availability of guns, the lack of universal background checks, and the widespread selling of illegal guns. And so in order to shut down the waves of gun violence, we need to stop the illegal gun dealers, some of whom are selling guns out of trunks of cars, some of whom are selling ghost guns by mail. In Oakland, we have passed a law prohibiting these unregistered, unlicensed ghost guns. And we need to crack down on them countywide. We also passed a law prohibiting leaving guns unsecured. And that needs more resources for enforcement and education. We also implemented some important new technology, including ShotSpotter, which is acoustic detection technology that allows law enforcement to know immediately when a gun is fired. And so we need to have dedicated ShotSpotter response crews to deploy immediately to the location of a shooting and to trace the bullets and the guns to shut down the sources so that illegal gun dealers stop getting away with being merchants of death into our community. I also would seek to create a countywide task force to track down and shut down the heavily armed caravans that have been committed premeditated armed robberies on pharmacies and dispensaries and other businesses throughout the county. They're operating countywide. They need a countywide response. Thank you.
Thank you. Lena Tam.
It's incredibly heartbreaking when the most vulnerable, whether our children, the elders, and our minority communities are victims of senseless gun violence, which has truly become a public health crisis. And thanks to your dad, our state has one of the toughest safety laws in the nation and happens to have one of the lowest gun death rates in the nation. As I think since we started passing gun safety laws, there's been like 111 laws in the state of California that govern and restrict the matter and space in which firearms can be used. But nationally, we have a truly broken system. When an 18-year-old can buy an assault rifle, easier than getting a psychiatric appointment. So I support the county's gun buyback program that's currently administered to the District Attorney's Office in conjunction with the Oakland Police Department and a coalition of a number of California cities that get matching grants from the state. I've also consistently advocated to provide law enforcement with their tools that are needed to curb gun violence, whether they're automatic notification systems like ShotSpotter or surveillance cameras at gun shops. I've joined with our governor and Attorney General and will continue to advocate for real federal gun control actions at the state, at the federal level, enforcing criminal penalties for illegal possession, getting ghost guns off the street, mandating things like liability insurance for guns like we have for cars, expanding background checks, banning assault weapons that I guess the Supreme Court tried to reverse, and making sure that we prohibit high-capacity assault rifles. And those are the things that I think we, as a supervisor, can continue making sure happens. And we've had a lot of these programs in place, at least since 2006, like the ShotSpotter program.
Thank you. Serlene Grant.
So I'm gonna go, I'm gonna start by looking at the low-hanging fruit. And as Lena suggested, the gun buyback program, that that could be in one way we start, just so you get some of these guns that maybe people get by breaking into people's homes or whatever. But from talking to others who talk and actually talking to some people who work with young people, it seems that the ghost guns, the ability to buy gun parts and assemble the guns are the big problem. And we need to find a way to prohibit those cells, the cells of those parts. I mean, if you go into the drugstore and you want to get body lotion, it's behind lock and key. And you gotta, you gotta go get somebody who can help you. So we, there needs to be a way to make it harder or more difficult or illegal, just straight up illegal and enforceable, not to have these ghost gun parts. And then we were talking about ShotSpotter as a tool. That's true. We also need to work more with our young people on programs such as ceasefire programs and similar programs that give young people options so that they don't think it's a sport to bring a computer game activity into real life and that there are, there are consequences. And so if we give folks jobs and options and hope and training so that maybe they can do something more constructive with their time will be a start. But really, I think the problem is ghost guns. And as a supervisor, I would look at ways to control or forbid the sale of pieces that make up the ghost guns.
Thank you. Okay. Gordon, we'll go on to the next question.
Great. Thank you, Becca. Your dad has already been referenced three times. So I hope he's on the call. I don't know if folks on the call can submit questions, but that'd be kind of fun. Welcome candidates and congratulations on your candidacy. My question is, the county provides safety net healthcare services for our lowest-income residents. Unfortunately, funding is countercyclical. When most people need the safety net, we are in a recession. And counties have received less state and federal funds. If elected, what will be your physical philosophy to address these funding cycles? And we'll start with Rebecca Kaplan.
Well, thank you so much. It is incredibly important to bring creativity and dedication to solving the problem of the revenues, including making sure that the county is doing everything possible to obtain allowable state reimbursements for programs that the county undertakes. We recently worked to change policy to allow funding to be made available to support programs like Meals on Wheels and other programs that provide healthy food from a source that had a surplus and hadn't previously been used. We also were able to convince the state of California to give us tens of millions of dollars to support the Macro Civilian Responder Program. But we also recognize that our hospitals are facing a crisis of their workforce. And so we need to combine resources from multiple sources, including our workforce development funding, to create training and incentive programs for the next generation of nurses and doctors and pharmacy techs and lab techs who, for whom the shortage creates problems, creates more costs when things don't get taken care of sooner, and creates risk for patients and for the rest of the workforce. I would also note that part of how we make sure to avoid the ups and downs in the budget is by looking at policy. A few years ago, we fought to have equity in how sales taxes were charged so that local businesses weren't put at a disadvantage compared to online companies. And so, you know, they called it the Amazon tax when it was being debated at the state level. We fought for that and it passed. And because years ago, we fought for that and it passed, that when everybody went to sheltering in place and shopping online, Alameda County's sales tax revenue did not go down. And it would have if we hadn't made that change. So it means fighting for sensible tax policies, making people who aren't paying pay, but also ensuring we're getting our fair share from the state. Thank you.
Thank you for that response. Next, we'll go to Lena Tam.
So the county's budget process includes required funding that is placed in reserve also. And that's one of the reasons why we have like a triple A rating. But budgets reflect the collective priorities of all of us as a community. And having been part of the leadership of the League of Women Voters at both the city and the county level, I hold a great fiduciary responsibility to see accountability when we're spending the public's money. So if funds like Measure A1 for housing or W are intended to address housing crisis, because that's what we told the voters, we need to make sure that it's used for that purpose and not get redirected. So the county will be getting an unprecedented infusion of funding to jumpstart a lot of the plans that are in place to build more housing, expand shelters. And a lot of these funds are one-time, as you mentioned. And it would leave a significant gap down the line in the later years, which could be filled by income streams like Measure W, for example, that provides $150 million. And so I will work with all of you, hopefully, to vigorously advocate to make sure that we, as a county, secure the dedicated funding from the state and federal, whether it's for emergency rental assistance or housing and mental healthcare, and work with all of you to stretch both our existing resources and new funding as it comes available to all of us.
Thank you, Lena. Serlene Grant.
You see me looking around while they were answering this question. Just this morning, I met with a group of program and service providers to the county. And they gave me a very real example. And I wrote it down. That's what I was looking for, the piece of paper. I wrote it down. They gave me a very real example of a program that they've gotten millions of dollars for. But the timing was such that they had to leave some of the money on the table. So we left money on the table. As a businessperson, I never leave money on the table. If there is money to be applied to a program or a service, we want to apply it. So one of the blessings for the county having the reserves it has is that we can then, if there's a lag in the cycle that you called out, Gordon, we can then use the reserves to finance the lag to then put the money back in when the money is delivered by the federal government, whomever. So whoever the funder is. So it's, being cyclical is not the problem. Managing the cycle is the problem. And we, we need good managers. We need good program managers and department managers to manage the cycle and not leave money on the table. That would be my short answer.
Thank you, Serlene. And David Kakashiiba.
So just to, I, 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 little bit lost. So your, the question is, we're providing healthcare services to the individual population. The fluctuations in state and federal revenues to the county will occur when we have an economic recession. What is my basic fiscal policy approach to governing on the Board of Supervisors? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So there's a couple of things. First of all, I think that's a big reason why you have a large, we have, anybody is to have a large reserve is for those economic uncertainties. And we have some history with us. That history is only 12 years old with the Great Recession. And to have some sense of, and I know it's, it's a different time period, but to get some sense in terms of a case study about what were those revenue shortfalls or reductions coming from the state and federal government? What did we encounter at that time? And begin to make some economic projections about what is a prudent reserve for the county to have in terms of being able to sustain core direct services in the healthcare arena? That's number one, is to be able to protect that reserve. Number two is that we should not be offloading any of our property tax revenues to help to finance the Howard Terminal. That is money that is being taken directly away and diverting revenues for services into a project that the county has very little organizational self-interest in.
Thank you for that answer. All right, I'm gonna throw it back to you, Becca.
All right, thank you. So homelessness continues to increase statewide despite significant state funding. And while Project Home Key provides funds for housing, it provides less funding for supportive services. If elected, what is your long-term strategy for addressing the homeless crisis? And we are going to, hang on. Lena Tam first.
So you're correct. Poverty, mental health issues, drugs, incarceration, health issues, poor personal relationships, those all are contributing factors to homelessness in our county. And each of the cities in the district, Oakland, Alameda, San Leandro, and the unincorporated, they've had initiated good programs to address homelessness with navigation centers. Like in Alameda, we just have the Village of Love. We have the Lau Family Development Group. We have the Covenant House that helps young people. We have the Spanish-speaking Unity Council. A lot of cities like Oakland have put in community cabins, RV parking communities, tiny homes and traditional housing. But what happens in Oakland obviously affects Alameda and San Leandro. So we need to make sure that we have the ability to treat the whole person because there's like 4,000 homeless people and Oakland simply doesn't have the capacity to just deal with the housing of it. But much of the housing is temporary. So we need to make sure that through the county's current homeless care and coordination center, which partners with a lot of community-based organizations, that we provide the funding and continue to increase the funding, which will come forward with this infusion of capital from the state to provide those kind of wraparound services that addresses the underlying causes of homelessness, which deals with like whether it's mental health issues or poverty or rental assistance and job training. And these organizations have the trust of the people that are in need of these services and they can provide the services more effectively. And that's critical to breaking that cycle with this intervention.
Thank you. Serlene Grant.
So in addressing homelessness, my, my fellow candidates have heard me break this down a couple of times. I see homelessness as in levels. So there are 8,000, I believe, there's 8,000 people who are reported homeless in the county. And so if I did this, I'm not using real numbers. I'm just doing this for illustration purposes. If there are about 2,000 that are probably homeless because of economic situation, because they, they pre-COVID or even during COVID, they weren't able to come up with the extra $200 to close the gap between rent, PG&E bills and food. And so after about six months, the landlord said, okay, you gotta go. And they're, where they went to, their options were limited. So they are, they are homeless or housingless and living in cars and all that we see. So I propose that we have, I use, I use the example of universal basic income because people understand that. But we have a program to close that gap for people, not only the very low, low income, but people who work every day, who just need to figure out a way to make their, make it balanced. Because we need to take care of them on the front end before they are at the back end and adding to our housing. And then there are people who are exchanged from their families for a number of reasons. But if we have supportive and wraparound services and we have counselors and peer navigators, which are supposed to start in July, to help family reunifications, then we can get maybe another 25% off of the streets. And then we're those, then we're with those that are indeed perhaps mentally ill, severely mentally ill, who need medical service. But then the system may be able to, it won't be so overwhelming to the system. And the system may be able to respond to them with some of the programs that are in place and that we can then use our navigation centers and all the other places we are putting out for homing, for housing homeless people. Thank you.
Thank you. David Kakashiiba.
The, there's a significant amount of money that's currently being invested by the county and by local city governments to sort of stop gap, providing some level of street outreach and intervention services to folks that are on the streets. The, the county, I think, so there is, I certainly talked about the nuance and the diversity, if you will, in the unhoused population. And that the, the county needs to have a much grander vision and kind of scope of authority to see what are, what is the level of staffing that's needed? And either that's by county staff or in partnership with different non-governmental organizations and faith organizations to do disciplined street outreach to, as new supportive housing units and complexes are being built, what are the, what is needed to provide that kind of wraparound support services to those residents? And it's gonna require the county and the local jurisdiction to pool resources and to really kind of bury jurisdictional kind of competition. And it would require that the county to play a proactive leadership role in trying to get waivers from the state around different forms of the, around reimbursement strategies and other kind of categorical, categorical forms of funding that is coming to the county from the state around these types of supports, these types of services.
Thank you. And Rebecca Kaplan.
Yes, absolutely. The level of homelessness is excessive and painful and is causing human suffering at multiple levels. And so to resolve this, we need to take several steps. One is to significantly strengthen coordination between the different service providers and between the county and the cities. And I would launch an intergovernmental task force, including both Alameda County and Oakland, to better coordinate services so we aren't sending people to call 10 different phone numbers to figure out where to get service. We also need to be willing to recognize which systems are working most effectively and do more of that, bringing a science-based approach. We have had good success when we've used dorms and hotels and other pre-existing buildings that can be rapidly turned into navigation centers where people get the support services, but they also get a room off the street, right? Sending counselors to talk to someone and then leaving them there on the sidewalk has not been very effective. And so we need that combination of spaces that have both the rooms and the onsite support staff. That's why one of the first things I would seek to do is to make sure we acquire and keep the Lake Merritt Lodge, a big dorm. And there's multiple hotels that the hotel owners are now willing to sell. And we could be housing hundreds more people in environments with services. We also need to prevent more people from being pushed into homelessness. And so I've been working for the past several weeks to resolve a major crisis in the state rental assistance payments. Landlords and tenants have spent a ton of time filling out forms, submitting documents to get the promised state rental assistance. And it hasn't come. And the county is still trying to score the different applicants against each other to decide who to fund. We met with the state leadership and got them to agree to a bridge loan that would fully cover all applicants so both landlords and tenants don't have to suffer. Landlords can get paid and more people don't have to be pushed into homelessness.
Thank you. Okay, Gordon, back to you.
Thank you. So earlier this year, a poll of registered voters showed 46% of Oakland voters oppose spending public money to build a waterfront ballpark for the Oakland A's, while 37% of voters supported it. Do you support spending public tax dollars to pay for a new stadium? And let's start with Serlene Grant.
I don't support using public tax dollars to play for a new stadium because this, this particular stadium was presented as one that we would not have to spend public tax dollars to pay for it. And I know that there's, the whole county has, the county Board of Supervisors has in front of it the question about the, the tax financing district. And in simple terms, it seems like the tax financing district would be a gift to the county. But it's one of those things like when they tell you if it's too good to be true. But it's one of those things, like when they tell you if it's too good to be true, you gotta look deeper. And in looking deeper, I've found some conflicting information. So I'm waiting until I get in a place where I have more information to make a real definitive declaration on the tax financing district. But the A's organization initially proposed this ballpark as something that was not going to require public financing.
Thank you. Let's go to David Kakashiiba.
The answer is no.
You don't care to elaborate?
Yeah. Well, certainly for the county, it really has no business helping to finance. And any kind of talk about how the county's portion could be segregated to build affordable housing is simply not true. If the county is interested in doing a tax infrastructure district, it can, the City of Oakland can do that for affordable housing. But when it's part of the overall packets for Howard Terminal, we know what happens. And very little of it will go to working families and to the poor. And very little of that will go there. And I don't think that the county should be, now, you know, city council and the mayor is grappling with it. And, you know, and I know that people are kind of on different sides. But for the county, we should not be involved.
Okay, Rebecca Kaplan, give us the inside scoop.
Absolutely. Well, thank you. Well, the first and probably most important inside scoop is that we don't yet actually have a proposal from the A's in terms of specific terms and dollars and cents and who would pay for what. So everybody who's rushing to adamantly assert the position they have on a proposal that does not yet exist, I think it's our moral obligation to receive and read a proposal before taking a position on it. But in terms of the broader question of what do I believe in using tax financing for? No, I do not believe in using tax financing for a ballpark or for other for-profit private ventures of that sort. In terms of other uses of tax increment financing, a little more inside scoop, which the Paradas will know the history of well, is that California used tax increment financing to build affordable housing for decades. It was totally normal. It had nothing to do with a sports team. It was a regular component of California law and it was called by a different name. It was called redevelopment. And what redevelopment was mostly, what redevelopment mostly was, was the ability to use tax increment financing to build affordable housing. The state wiped that out a decade ago. And now, lo and behold, we have the worst affordable housing crisis of our lifetime since the state deleted the strongest power that cities had to leverage funding to build affordable housing. So I do believe in tax increment financing for affordable housing, and I always have. And that should be true regardless of a ballpark. And we should be doing, as we're working on in Oakland, tax increment financing throughout our jurisdictions to build affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you for that answer. And Lena Tam.
I agree with Oakland Mayor Libby Schaaf's approach, which basically says that existing tax dollars should not be used to pay for the project and certainly not for a new stadium. If the Howard Terminal project financing pencils out and generating the future tax revenue, it would provide much-needed community benefits irrespective of the stadium, such as the affordable housing that would come from that project and offer opportunities for smart growth projects that, as I heard, was endorsed by the Green Belt Alliance. So like Rebecca, I support the county's participation in the enhanced infrastructure financing district because it's a mechanism that was similar to the redevelopment funds that we used to get from tax increment funding that would help economic revitalization of the community and help bring some funding for the county and getting affordable housing built and also pay for some health and safety net programs that are core to the county's mission.
Thank you. And Becca, I know you have a really good question coming up.
Oh, yes. Thank you. I do. It's my turn already. Okay. So it has been more than 20 years since voters approved Measure D, Save Agriculture and Open Space Initiative. It's also known as the Urban Growth Boundary. But that initiative today seems to be in direct conflict with what we've been talking about, provided much-needed housing. So what is your position on amending Measure D to address the housing shortage? We're going to start with David Kakashiiba.
I don't have a fixed position about amending Measure D for the purpose of building more housing. It is not totally clear to me that that amendment is necessary to build, to reach our goals around both market rate and affordable housing for different municipalities in the Alameda County. So I'd like to hear more perspectives and more data on that. But at this point, the, in a place like Oakland where it's just utterly failing in its construction of affordable housing units vis-à-vis market rate housing, it's something that we have to learn from. We have to understand why that is the case and what are we going to do about that.
Thank you. Rebecca Kaplan.
Thank you. We absolutely do need to build thousands of units of additional housing. We are far behind. And folks should read the Regional Housing Needs Assessment documents that are published by the Association of Bay Area Governments. If you want to read more into the nuts and bolts and the exact numbers that they're recommending for every jurisdiction. But let's be clear that it's a lot. However, I have ways to achieve that that do not require losing open space and greenways. For example, we have recently approved through the Oakland City Council a proposal to move ahead with the development at the Oakland-Alameda Coliseum property that can include thousands of units of additional housing. We are in the process of moving forward on a proposal at the Lake Merritt-Bart Station area that will have huge numbers of units of additional housing. We have voted to put out for housing development, city-owned parcels, including those downtown, on Broadway, on Clay Street, as well as a city-owned parcel by Oak Knoll. And so we have an opportunity to have a win-win for the environment and for housing and for transportation by building smart growth infill development along transit hubs, at Bart stations, on facilities that are readily accessible and don't require the loss of open space. And so it seems to me that the best way to increase our housing supply while also reducing traffic congestion and global impacts is to focus our effort on infill transit-oriented development, including the many parcels that we have already approved but which haven't yet been built. And we also successfully obtained funding for these recommended infill development proposals as part of Alameda County Measure BB, which funds transportation, infrastructure, and transit-oriented development, which I helped write and the voters overwhelmingly approved.
Thank you. Lena Tam.
So I chaired the Alameda County Planning Commission. When Measure D was being considered, I advocated for it because it established an urban growth boundary to prevent sprawl for encroaching into our agricultural lands and our open space, our watershed, wildlife habitat, and stream beds, which are really important in the watershed. But during that time, I also approved 2,400 infill housing units in the unincorporated area that were transit-oriented projects that were possible in reducing our carbon footprint and preserving our open space. So there is a way to do that with infill development and meeting our RENA requirements under the housing elements of each city. And I think in conversations I've had recently with the Preserve Agricultural Group and Supervisor Nate Miley, there are community discussions to try to amend Measure D to increase the floor area or floor area ratios for non-residential buildings for the agricultural uses in the parts of Livermore. And so because Measure D currently limits the floor area of those buildings to 1% of the parcels area in order to keep the scale of the building in proportion to the size. So if there is going to be an amendment, it should be done by a voter initiative because Measure D was voted upon by the electorate.
Okay, thank you. And Serlene Grant.
Currently, the RENA, Regional Housing Needs Assessment, projections from the state and from ABAQ say that this region needs upwards of 400,000 units of housing region-wide, not just in the county. So 440,000 units of housing of all types, from low, very low to moderate. That's what the RENA does. Every city right now in the Bay Area is working on their RENA plans, their updates. They're doing so without a clamor for changing Measure D. So Alameda County cities can find ways to meet their goals through infill development, developing smart with transit-oriented development, developing with density. No one has clamored to say we need to change Measure D. So in this immediate cycle and in this immediate generation, I don't think there is a need for any amendments to Measure D.
Okay, thank you. And now I'm going to turn it back over to Gordon for our last question.
Thanks, Becca. As we have covered, the county provides an array of services, planning, housing, mental health, public safety, et cetera. What area, what service area is your personal focus? And what are your plans and what will it mean for the people of Alameda and San Leandro and Oakland? We'll start with Rebecca.
Well, thank you very much. We have multiple frontline essential services that are suffering a great deal due to a lack of an adequate workforce and the loss of people. There's not enough mental health providers. People in urgent need of mental health services aren't getting them. And then people get worse and then they get sent to jail where it costs three times as much to help them. And so we need to be investing in proactive, community-based mental health services that reach people early before it rises to the level of a crisis, before people are injured and before people end up incarcerated at great cost. We also know that our hospitals are absolutely essential and need to have the staffing in order to keep people healthy. I will fight to launch a job training program that will help recruit and train people for our essential frontline positions. And that also, by the way, includes some of the other functions for which being underserved, including issuing permits, including filling potholes where we're also short. But where we would do something like the public interest loan forgiveness programs that some law schools and medical schools have, but where we train people for other essential frontline jobs and they don't have to pay back the cost of the training if they work in our essential frontline positions. With mental health being the one where we have the greatest gap right now and then other aspects of healthcare, including in-home support service workers, folks to help care for our growing senior population, our growing community of people with disabilities, to make sure that we will have the people to provide those jobs. And finally, to strengthen access to healthy food and to jobs in the growing local food sector by expanding on the food hub that Supervisor Wilma Chan launched and launching them throughout the county to serve all of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Lena.
I think we need to focus on mental health care. We have a mental health care crisis in the county, especially as we recover from the pandemic. We're finding that more so in our young people. And so moving forward, I think there's a tremendous opportunity to build up our mental health care programs that have been severely underfunded. And this includes funding that Governor Newsom has earmarked in his budget. There's $14 billion for a multi-year investment and it will provide the combination of housing units with treatment slots, with training programs to get the adequate staffing that we need. And this is also going to include an annual investment in community behavioral services that the county is well-positioned to receive. And we will be well-positioned to build that bridge housing to quickly address the issues of our homelessness and the ones that we have with behavioral health issues. And while these new units come online and we're working with the state to enhance the ability to get Med-Cal, for example, to provide coverage for behavioral health care services, we're going to need more community-based placements. And that is something that will be a major priority for myself.
Okay, thank you. Serlene.
The question is, what is my personal focus? And I have to say, what would be my personal folk I floor? So first of all, housing. Housing is what morally compelled me to come into this race. I was working with residents, as I've stated, who had a foreclosure note of low-income housing with foreclosure notices while the governor is in Santa Clara County, the richest county, saying, you know, we got new funds available for new housing, but we're about to threaten the security of 45 families. So as I said, I'm concerned when the moratorium is lifted, when we move through this pandemic and all these things. What, how are we going to keep people housed? So that would be my first. My second is, I want to make Alameda County a hallmark county. We sit surrounded by an abundance of resources, from natural resources to universities and education to high-tech life sciences. Alameda and San Leandro have wonderful, wonderful biotech and other innovative companies doing all kinds of things with artificial intelligence. So when we talk about our mental health crisis, yes, we have a mental health crisis, but maybe there's some artificial intelligence program that can be built so that, I've been talking about, we're going to have to do something to kind of check in with each other because there aren't, you know, we're coming out of the pandemic. We can't be together for forums like this. When we come together, we don't know if we can touch each other, shake hands. Our whole way of being has been changed. And so when we look at mental health, we're not talking about people who are severely mental health challenged. We're talking about people like us, highly functional people who have to figure out how to survive each day as well. So we have healthcare, we have the hospitals. There's a lot that could be happening with a lot of the new technology and innovation that surrounds us. And I would like to see it applied to the county to make our county a hallmark county. Thank you.
And finally, David.
So two things. Homelessness, the prevention and the reduction of homelessness and the reduction of crime and the revolving door of folks going in and out of our county criminal justice system. These are issues, crime, violence, homelessness. These are issues that, maybe it's just me, but they are in fact getting worse. And as I go out into multiple neighborhoods in all four communities in District 3, crime, violence, and homelessness are on the top of the minds and concerns of rank-and-file residents. We have to be about resolving problems, getting real results, some real tangible change and improvement in the day-to-day lives of residents, of merchants, of everybody in District 3. The path of going, doing business as usual is simply not acceptable. That, these are, this is a matter of life and death in many instances. And it is a matter of our own kind of comfort, our fear, our apprehension, and it changes our behavior. This is going on in my neighborhood right now, right just around these blocks here. And this is not considered to be a high-impacted area. But there are a lot of things that are going on. that is a result of an, if not in a tense, whatever we're doing now around homelessness and crime, it is not working.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the question portion of the program. And so what we're going to do now is allow the candidates, I want to thank all the candidates again for being here. Thank you, Alameda, San Leandro Chamber. Thank you to my partner in crime, Becca, who looks angelic with the backlight going on there. That looks awesome. So let's do a one-minute close for each candidate, and we'll start with Lena Tam.
Thank you to Chamber for hosting this forum. I want to work with you to help small businesses recover from the pandemic and address the issues of homelessness, community safety, and mental health access. I bring the depth and the breadth of experience and leadership skills to the board, having served on the Alameda City Council, the Alameda Healthcare District Board, and the Alameda County Planning Commission. I continue to advocate for policies and projects that improve our quality of life in District III through my activism with the Lee One Voters, Asian Pacific Democratic Caucus, the Parks and the Hospital Foundation. I am honored to have the support of community groups like the Alameda Contra Costa Medical Association, the East Bay Realtors Association, Controller Betty Y., Treasurer Fiona Ma, Supervisors Dave Brown and Dave Halpert, former Supervisor Alice Lightbicker, County Assessor Fong Law, Mayor Marilyn Ashcraft, and Libby Schaaf, Senator Parada, San Lorenzo Village Home Leaders like Keith Barrows and Kathy Reedy. And I would be honored to earn your vote.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Serlene Grant.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to share with each of you. I just want to bring up the point that while you haven't seen me on the dais in San Leandro in a while, I've been doing the work, and I think that people need to know that. My work has been behind the scenes, but I've done things like introduce inclusionary business practices such as local purchasing ordinances where local businesses have an advantage to bring business to San Leandro. I could introduce similar structures or similar policies to the county. I've been working to build unity between communities, working with what we have in San Leandro called Unity in the Community, as we are entering a phase of life where there's so much animosity between everyone. My work is collaborative. I bring people together to find solutions. I would do that with the county. Thank you. I ask for your support.
Thank you, Serlene. David.
I believe everybody can tell that the four of us, each of us, bring an incredible amount of experience in the community and in government. And I think all, based on just core qualifications, all four of us are qualified to serve on the Board of Supervisors. If you agree, if you feel that homelessness has gotten worse, if you believe crime and violence have gotten worse, and you believe that that is what county government and city government should be focused on reducing, preventing, mitigating, to improve the quality of life for everybody, these are strategic issues to focus in on. If you believe that, then I'm your person on the Board of Supervisors. That is what I believe, and I will bring disciplined leadership, and I will bring a greater focus on public accountability for getting real results. And that, and so that's simply it. I will put in the chat my email and my cell number. Anybody wishes to have an ongoing conversation about this, please reach out to me, and I will get back right away. Thank you very much.
Okay, Rebecca.
Thank you so much for this opportunity this evening. I asked for your vote and your support so that I can bring my dedication and thoughtful leadership to solving the problems and providing the services that our community needs. Several people talked tonight about the importance of Project Ceasefire, which intervenes to stop the cycle of gun violence. When that project was cut in Oakland a year and a half ago, I went out and found the money that people said didn't exist, identified a new source of funding, and got that program reinstated. I am honored to be endorsed by the Democratic Party, the San Leandro Democratic Club, the Metropolitan Greater Oakland Democratic Club, Planned Parenthood, the Firefighters Union, our nurses, Supervisor Vaie, the Honorable Sandre Swanson, Elihu Harris, Malia Cohen, business leaders like Rick DeSilva, John Low, and the Oakland Chamber of Commerce. I'd be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you again to all the candidates. You all did great. And thank you to everybody who's tuned in to this forum. I hope it helped you make a decision or get closer to making a decision. And I want everybody to get out there and vote on the 7th of June. I know Don Parada's voting on the 7th of June. I just wanted to say his name again because it hasn't been mentioned enough tonight. Thank you to my co-host, Becca. Thanks, San Leandro Chamber. And thank you, Alameda Chamber. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Take good care.
You too.